Okay. Pleasant good evening to my sisters and brothers in Christ, and we truly give God thanks and praise for allowing us to be assembled another time on this platform where we can study God's word. We thank Him, we are truly grateful and thankful for this blessing that we have this evening, where we can learn more and more about Jesus, so that we will become more and more like Him. So it's, we already almost caught up, so let's begin, we'll just have a practice.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank thee that thou had called and decided there was no. We thank thee for your love, we thank thee for your grace. We thank thee because when we didn't deserve your favors, you look on us and you pity our state and you brought us thus far, that we can assemble one with another now to be more educated, to be more knowledgeable about your word. Well, Lord, as we come in your presence, we ask that every individual on this platform, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your Holy Spirit to cover them. The spirit of knowledge, the spirit of wisdom, that spirit of truth will envelope each and every one of us, that when we study your word, Lord, we may not study it as a means of argument, but we may study your word as a means of growth and drawing people closer to your bleeding side, Lord. We just thank thee for this moment, Lord, as we about to get into your word to know more about thee, we pray blessed Jesus, you just take over. And we will not feel to give you the honor and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
Thank you very much, Brother Mike. We go right into this evening's session, so over to Sister Kusel.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another evening's Bible study session.
Kinda low, you're kinda low, Sister Kushi.
Alright, just give me a second.
I could raise mine, but you're kinda low.
Alright, hopefully that's a little bit better. Yeah, so welcome to another Wednesday Bible study session. We hope that you guys were able to read at least some of the scriptures, I guess between last week and, or last session and last week, so that we would all come and discuss what is, what we have read and see, as I mentioned in the reminder message today, what we can learn from the account of David, because we are here to learn. These accounts were placed in the Bible so that we could have a guide for living. The Bible is our manual for living, and anything that happens within these accounts is for us to be a little bit more knowledgeable and for us to be able to navigate when things do come our way, if they do come our way. So this is why we are taking the time to discuss all these people and their personalities and their different accounts and accounts of their lives, essentially. Alright, and we're going through it in this manner, so that we would be able to get these persons from a new angle. Sometimes we are accustomed to seeing these characters one way, I know David is one of the persons in the Bible that we are well, we are familiar with, and every time we come across him in our normal studies, he is discussed, you know, in a particular way. So we're trying to get more and we're trying to to learn as much as possible for our daily lives. We, last week, we stopped at, I believe we stopped at where I'm trying to remember if we discussed where, yeah, we did talk about where David was confronted by Nathan, the prophet, I think that was the last place that we stopped. So next on the, next on the discussion would be the account of what happened following Oliver, we know that, you know, he lost his son, God ended up, you know, killing his son. And that was more or less part one of his punishment, or the beginning of his quote unquote punishment. Even though God had, we know that God had forgiven his sin, but consequences have the consequence, and he suffered that down the line, which is what we will start talking about today. So let's have a great discussion, emphasizing discussion, because I don't want to be the only one talking this afternoon. So let's go, this account of where he, where the consequences really started to kick in will be found in 2nd, I think it starts in 2 Samuel 12. Alright, and I'm just going to ask someone to give us just a quick rundown of what happened in 2 Samuel 12 for those of us who are not able to get reading done, because life happens, right? So just like to ask for volunteer to run down the account of what happened in 2 Samuel 12 between, I never remember his name, Amnon and Abishim? Well, that area there, right? 2 Samuel 15, right, I was corrected. Right, so anybody want to give us a quick rundown of what happened there?
Alright, Sister Kusel, so really far, really, it started at 12, but it get 10 to 13, because 11, 12 is really David and Bathsheba, and then 12 and 13, you're getting down to, alright, as I said, Absalom probably knew that Solomon was slated to be David's successor as king, hence this effort to steal the throne from his father David. Oh, Lord, she was rebellion, and you'll get that in chapter 20. Absalom attempted to use her, use temptation, probably weaken David whole on the people. So she might try his hands at it as well, but soon was crushed. Then the Philistine grew bold again, chapter 21, and again David was victorious, and then he sung a song of praise. So in a nutshell, in a nutshell, this is where David's trouble began, for what had happened. God punishing him for him straying a bit. But we see all in all, he was restored. He had pressure from right wrong, he had pressure from inside and outside, because he had put the Philistine, as we know, to rest before that by taking off Galatera, and all Philistine fled and was afraid of David. And because of what happened here, the Philistine grew bold again. So we are thankful to God that we have this before us, I don't know if that could help us a bit. Back to you, Sister Kusel.
Alright, thank you, Brother Mike. Alright, so it is Samuel, 2 Samuel 15, so let me correct myself. And that was where we had where David, well, where we, yeah, we meet Absalom, right, whose sister was Tima, and we know where that, we know, we've heard that name before, right, it's not the same person, but. So Tima was sister of Absalom, and I think the relation is half sister there. Yes, so half sister of Amnon, right, and that story, that account is another account of sexual assault, where Amnon was lusting after his half-sister. And it got to the point where his friend ended up advising him of what to do, right, and if you read, so the 2 Samuel, it's in chapter of 2 Samuel, you would know that, you know, the friend told him, well, pretend that you're sick and have her come in by, by alone, essentially. And so that happened, and he ended up, well, raping her. Couple of things. The themes that played through in that account were more or less mimicking the themes from a couple of accounts that we saw before. Because we had where we had where the, we had, we had sexual assault essentially, right? And that was with, that was with, trying to remember this story. It was Bathsheba. It was Bathsheba and David, right? Both accounts with Bathsheba and David and with this Tima and Amnon, both of them were cases of sexual assault. So you see, it repeats, it repeated itself in another generation, right? And this is the thing with, sometimes with sin, and sin that is sometimes goes undelved with. Sometimes sin affects your next generation. Right, it's something, it's what we call generational curse, what we like to call generational curse. Right, so that ended up happening within David's very bloodline, right next door. I didn't even skip a generation or anything like that, went right downstairs. Alright, so we had that whole, and even the struggle with loss going on there, because David had his thing with Bathsheba and whatever. And then now this guy, Amnon, had this thing with his, and it was his half-sister this time, wasn't even, not that it makes it any better, but I'm saying it happened within the family, right? Something like this happened within the family. And David, I mean, David was forewarned that this would happen. And so we see here where really and truly David was sat, well, David would have started seeing what, what God was talking about when, while this is beginning of, when the sword would never leave us, because this was the prelude to Amnon's murder, which is where the sword basically came in. Alright? Any comments thus far? Yes, Sister Neen just sent a message on the chat, and she says, sin always follows. That's why we are, we're in the mess we're in right now. Exactly, exactly, like I said, sin doesn't just, when we sin, it doesn't just affect us. Right? Sometimes it affects our generation, sometimes it affects people. As a matter of fact, everything that we do ought to be thought about carefully, because it always affects somebody else, just as when we share the gospel, or when we tell somebody, oh, Christ, it can end up affecting them positively, everything that we do negatively also affects somebody else. We can't always just think about ourselves as the protagonists of our stories, and whatever we do is for us, and no. What our actions always need to be thought about before we do them, our words need to be thought about before we say them, because they affect everyone and everything around us.
Sister Kusel, good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to interject here a little with Tima. Amon, David's firstborn, raped his half-sister Tima. 2 Samuel 15, chapter 13, verse 1 to 18. It had no record there showing that David did anything about what happened with Tima. He was angry, yes, but I mean, as a father and somebody raped your daughter, to me, that wasn't good enough. That was not good enough at all. Right? Probably because David did nothing, the Bible says, Absalom spoke to his brother Amon, neither good nor bad. For Absalom hated Amon because he had forced his sister Tima. Absalom plotted how to avenge the rape of his sister. He killed his eldest brother. Two years later, two years it took him, you know, to avenge his sister's rape. So you see, and this is going on up to now. We would hold things in our mind for a very long time, for what reason? To get revenge. At what cost? Because of our soul. It don't make sense. It don't make sense. Two years, two years later, he waited to avenge his sister's rape. When it looked as if everybody was, had forgotten about what happened, if David had acted the way a father should and discipline Amon, Absalom might not have killed him. Absalom fled to Gushar after the murder. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Sister Walcott. Yeah, David really did take a long time, well, he did nothing, as a matter of fact. I think it was because his children were involved, I think that's why he, and then that's why he paused a little bit. But for me at least, the person to watch there was Absalom. I mean, I was talking before we came on, and she was, she was essentially saying the same thing that you were saying, Sister Walcott. And I saw it a little bit differently in that I am, I'm looking at the fact that Absalom from, and I'm skipping ahead a little bit, forgive me, but from what we read of Absalom further down, Absalom seems to be, seemed to be a very patient person. He was a strategist. So he knew how to bide his time, how to pace himself. And I think part of it, for me at least, part of it was that he was waiting to see what David would do, but also he was just waiting for a good time to just catch Amnon. Because if Amnon would have been looking out to see if anybody would retaliate, Amnon was not oblivious to the fact that he had done something, abominable. He would have more than likely been expecting that somebody would have done something to him, but not, probably not two years after, which is why probably Absalom waited, as I say, he, yes, he allowed him to get very comfortable. And as I said, he's a, he was a smart man, he was a strategist, and he bided his time really, really well, to come back for two years, you know how petty you have to be? To come back after two years to try to kill somebody for something that happened 24 months ago, like you have to be really, 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 really petty. And Absalom throughout this whole account until, up until when he died, he was a man who knew, who knew how to wait. He, we talk about the patience of Job, the patience of Absalom right on that, because you have to be real patient to do what he did, right? So he was a bit of a strategist. Anybody else?
Yes, Sister Kusel. Sister Walcott mentioned that, you know, David did nothing about the rape between Amnon and Tima. But I'm looking at the same chapter 13, verse 13, where Tima had told Amnon, instead of forcing her, "Why now? Now, dear, by prayer, speak unto the king, for he will not withhold me from thee." So what, does that tell us that, doesn't that tell us that she didn't expect the father to do anything, as a matter of fact? She had no say in the matter. And we come right back to the point where women had no say. You know, they were just used as possessions, you know? So I'm wondering, I'm wondering what, if David would have, if it would have meant anything really? But David saying, David may not have said anything.
That's actually, that's actually a really good question. I don't know. I don't know if it would have made sense for her to to go, I feel like, I feel like she, David would have been like, well, yeah, go ahead. And I think, I think Tima was trying to avert what was, what she, what she kinda probably knew was going to happen anyway, she was in a position where when, when you're boxing like that, in that kind of situation, you, you're trying your best to defuse, so that the terrible thing that's about to happen to you doesn't happen. But I think she, she knew that, yeah, this, this was going to be her life, and she was just trying to defuse the situation. Again, she wouldn't have had much of a say, and if, if Amnon had asked, bothered to ask, David probably would have said, yeah. And that was the, that was the culture of things then. And sadly, in some places, it's still the culture of things right now. Sad, but it continues to be what it is, it's frustratingly what it is.
Everyone. I looked at the friend that Amnon had, Jonah, Jonah, Bob, Jonah Dab. He, and when I looked at it, I thought, you know, the need, the reason, this is a good reason for us, not us Christians, to have friends who will give you good counsel. Because he was in this situation, and apparently it was showing on his body, he was getting thin and whatever, you notice that a friend. And when you find out that what was the problem, instead of giving him a good advice, he helped him to set up the plan to pretend you were, you are ill and to do all the other things. A good friend, a person who is really a friend, will give you a good advice. So I was looking at that particular point, and I'm saying, we as Christians need to ask God to help us to have persons in our circle who will give us good counsel, so that we will do those things that are right, because of ourselves, sometimes we can make the wrong decisions. But if we have persons around us who we can chat with, you know, they could give us an advice that will avert some of these things. So I looked at that as one of the important points, that we need to have persons who could give good counsel.
Yeah, for sure. Friends carry you, but they don't bring you back. I think, I think Jonah Dab thought that that was good advice. To him, that was excellent advice, because I mean, when you're, when you're a particular age, especially when you're younger, it seems to be, I'm not saying this is always the case, it seems to be that the worst decisions always seem to be the best solutions to issues that you have. Whether, whether it is, you know, whether it is because you feel that sometimes the adults or the parents or the guardians in your life don't know better, or whatever it is, sometimes the worst possible thing to do seems to be the best possible advice to give, to take, the best possible action to follow. And I believe that is genuinely what happened here, these were two young people. Yeah, it is an, yes, it is an indictment on the value of, because they didn't, they didn't care. They didn't care. And these were two young people who didn't, who just only cared about what was going on with them. They were not emotionally involved enough. And because this is, this is a part of them that's supposed to be taught by the parents. And, and you're supposed to make sure, you're supposed to make sure, supposed to make sure that they, they follow the right path. Even though they are individuals, and you know very well that at the end of the day, it can't make decisions for them. So, I mean, I guess. Yeah, it has to be the examples that this, has, has to be, has to be, has to be. But as we, as we continue to say, this, this follows up on the the consequence of what David did in the first place, right? Even though God forgave, forgave him, and I, I guess that's the most important thing. That is the most important thing, that God ended up forgiving him, and he, he repented, God forgave him, and now is that, but all of these follow-ups happen because he made a decision that was not, but that was not the best decision. Alright? Yeah, good, good friends, good friends are necessary at all ages. And not just, not just having good friends, but being able to listen to sound advice, because you could have friends who will be telling you the right thing, the godly thing. And sometimes we just, we just want to do our own thing, because we feel we are people. Or we feel like we know the most, and we don't, we're not willing to be open and to learn. And that, it goes back to being willing to open, to be, to be in, willing to learn, and to be humble enough to want to learn, right? We have, we have to, we have to have good friends, but we also have to be willing to accept good counsel. Yeah, and that sometimes that's really hard for adults to do, because we feel like we know it all. No matter how much we like to sometimes fool ourselves and think, yeah, man, no, I, I am, I am always willing to learn. It's not, it's not the easiest thing. Because sometimes we, sometimes people tell us things, and we hurry to get, you know, defensive. But it is good for us to try to be able to have that learning spirit and that, that accepting, being able to receive information, always learning, all the time. Anybody else wants to comment on this account with Amnon and well, Amnon and Tima, we didn't really talk about the Amnon and Tima, Absalom part, just we kind of touched on it, but we didn't. Anybody wants to comment on the account with Amnon and Tima, before we move on to the Absalom part of it? Alright, don't rush.
Go right ahead, go right ahead, I'll come in after, go ahead, I'll come in after, go ahead. Okay, I, pleasant good evening to one and all. It's just something that came to me from Ammon and Tima's behavior, Ammon's behavior with his sister. We have friends, in today's society, we call people friends, and we trust them. Parents, long time and now, trust their children with friends and family. And we are seeing this going on in today's family. I leave my child with the neighbor, which is a relative or I leave my child with the neighbor, which is a relative or may not be a relative, and we trust them. Because. It's relative and we don't see any harm in leaving them with a relative. But sometimes when we don't trust in God. These things do not work in God's direction, because I see Jonah Barber here as being Ammon's friend. If he was truly Ammon's friend, he will not have encouraged Ammon to play, pretend to be sick. When his sister come to him, because he did go and confide in his friend. Jonah Barbe, he disconf- did confide in him. And as we. Do confide in one another, need to pray and talk to children nowadays. And ask God to give them direction and to give us direction, that we will not end up as Ammon and Tima. Because we are seeing incest and family going on with one another today. And it happening as the Bible really say, and old people say, such was in the beginning, so shall it be in the end. So in order to be forgiven and not to have to ask, I should say that I have to ask for forgiveness. Let us try and. Um, talk to God with our children and teach our children to pray. Now that time is getting harder and it's getting worse. And while we're praying with our children, teach them to pray too and to tell their friends and that you are not my friend, you are my brother's friend. But seeing that David was the king, he, the son told himself, my father will not. Tell you anything or he will not go against. Parents now have to tell their children, do not trust your brother to say, well, I am coming to you, to feed you, I am coming. We have to check up on ourselves as Christians, or I should say, we call ourselves Christians. We should check upon ourselves, seeing that it was in the beginning. Try hard and not let it be in the end. Because words are kind. We can take it literally, or we can take it as a meaning and say. Let us talk to our children and tell them when we go out. Choose your friends and even though you choose your friends, when you're with your sister or your brother, still keep an eye open on them. Because we don't know who to trust these days, because he trusted, he trusted, she trusted. Um, Tama trusted her father to go to her brother to prepare something for him to eat, but that is not what he had in mind. So what I got from Tama and Ammon. Today's lifestyle and today's life, we ought to take an example from them. And try and not let these things keep being a current decimal, like an occurring decimal. So as we continue to read, let us continue to pray that these things are wiped out. Because we, yes, we will be forgiven of our sin, but remember these things stay as stain. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Sister Anne, and this is why we do Bible study. So that we don't repeat the behaviors that, um. God already warned his people in the past about, right? We know that. Because of the time that we are in. This is inevitably going to continue, right? We are creatures who were born in same shape and equity and this is the way that it has to go, it's going to get worse, unfortunately. However. We ought to be aware of things that. Have happened and we, um, need to do our best to avoid them, which is why. We are always encouraged to read the Bible and to have it ingrained on our hearts, right? So that we would not be able, we would not sin against God. Hide it in your heart, that's what the Bible says, right? Um, and this is why we do in the Bible study like this, so that we could see some of the incidents that played out. And so that we could know how to avoid them, because don't feel you are Christian. And these things are be so beyond you are so Holy Ghost filled that they are beyond you. David was a man and continued to be a man after God's own heart. And look at the big blunder that he made, he, he made a huge mess. Out of one little situation, one little thought that he had, one little action that he made. And, you know, he end up suffering because of it. So the, doing all of this is so that we could avoid some of the issues that. That these people went through. I just wanna. Okay, right, so I just wanna read verse twenty one. Um, out of this thirteen chapter of Samuel very quickly. That talks about David's reaction to the situation. I mean, it doesn't help for me, but I just wanna read so that we could be clear. Um, and it says, but when King David heard of all these things, he was very rough. So it was not David was just there as with this guy who was with Tima, what's his name? Ju- Ju- Judah? Remember when Judah, um, no, somebody, no, who was it? Oh, was it, was it, was it Jacob?
The first Tama was Judah.
Yes.
That was her, that was her father-in-law.
Yes, the first team was Judah, but there was somebody who. Wasn't, wasn't it, um, Jacob? Who, when his child, his daughter got Diana, got, yes, so when, when Diana was. Was, was kidnapped and I think she was assaulted too as well. It's very disturbing that all these women. And this is just a sidebar, a little sidebar. It's very disturbing that all these women are being assaulted and these are people that. Supposed to be representative of God, which is what I'm saying, this is why we do any Bible study like this. These things are not beyond us and sometimes they're happening right among us and we just ignoring them. All these little things are warnings for us, so that's why we examine them, it's not to make. Any of the characters quote-unquote look bad, we can't do that, they're in the Bible for a purpose, their legacy is cemented, there's nothing we can do. But we're talking about it so that we could avoid it and learn from them, right? So just like when, um. Diana was assaulted by those guys in Alanday, Jacob was angry too. But he didn't do anything, it was left to the children. The, or the children took it upon themselves to go and do what they had to do and they made a mess, we come back here again. And David was mad, but he didn't do anything and Absalom had to come in, well, Absalom came in after two years. And did what he had to do. Um, so, yeah, so David was angry. He didn't deal with the situation, I guess, how his, this how his children felt that it should have been handled and Absalom dealt with the situation. He didn't say a word, he didn't say anything good, he didn't say anything bad, he was just. Angry and that did not help the situation at all. I guess, is that listening here?
Sister Kusha, we have, um, uh, Jelani Tab, uh, Jelen Tab tried to get in. She was. Tried to get in before.
That was Sister Ford, Sister Ford, you have something to say, you can go ahead.
No, I, I just wanted to say one little observation I found. The same, um, chapter thirteen, where we talk about, we saw where they said. Jonah Dab was a very subtle man. You know, and he asks, he asks, and I'm, I'm none. Why at all be in the king's song lean from day to day? And that reminds me so much of. This subaltern, he had not he done, he was described as subtle. You know, and he, he came and he questioned and, you know, the God say that you shall not eat of. Yeah, and you, you, you felt you still get the subtlety from Jonah Dab. Just as you got it from the subaltern, it had, it was, was just that, um, observation I, I, I thought. Yes.
Just before you, um, move on. I wanted to read verse twenty one as well because, um, we. Took it from, uh, what, when David got. Knowledge or wind of what happened, but remember, David had just. Gotten out of this situation with Bathsheba and he was. On his road to recovery, David didn't know nothing until Absalom came to him. When they, um, when they, um, Ammon, um, Absalom gave him to him and tell him, bye, look, the ship Sheras. Um, having a visit and let, let all of us, David said, look. We can't go down there, you know, because these all of us, we charge a plan, all this kind of thing. And he pressed him, a- and Absalom only had that in his mind. To put Ammon in place to kill him. So if we don't know about something, we could scarcely accord it, and they say, when David get to here. He was very angry. Because the thing had already happened, it couldn't do, it, it couldn't do anything. Because let us say he had summons Ammon up and kill him again, that is another murder on his hand. But his brother had already taken his sister to live, um, with him, which is Absalom, that's Jonah Dab there. That is David nephew, you know, that is David brother's son, work up with that plan there, you know? So you see, all these chains of reaction, I mean, we're looking at it and saying, I do nothing. Nothing couldn't be done because God had already said that the sword shall not depart from your house. So because of what David did to Bathsheba, these thing. Had was to follow and it's good that we, we have it as a lesson, or we must also read in into it. If this script does not continue, we would not have reached down to where. Christ coming through that same line, we would appreciate it, we would have appreciated it. We don't appreciate forgiveness and all those kind of thing, because in order for us to. As I mentioned the other day, the other day, if David had not committed that sin with Bathsheba. David would have been a man worshipped because he had nothing else against him. So people would actually start to worship David, so sometimes. David, um, God leave some, um, allows some marks to come upon us. So that people will know that he is in control. So it is not right for us to say that David didn't do anything or when he ate, he didn't do nothing. They had already gone down to Absalom's house, so David couldn't do nothing to go down there. And check what, check what Absalom do, put, um, Ammon in place to kill him. God bless.
I want to add something which, um, we should look at. We need to pray significantly for our children and our family. Because David couldn't. Know what was happening at the time or before it happened. That is why prayer has to come to stop it from happening, so that. Ammon, Amnon would not have been sick and lost. Absalom would not have been so aggressive. And all of these things that we see in Job, Job offered sacrifices. For his children, just in case they sinned. He, he preempted. He don't know, he not sure, he often sacrifice. And that's how we need to take it, we need to lift them up before God. Whether they are saved or not. Show them to, to, for God to show them to salvation and for if they're saved, them not to slip. Because the thing is, David was a man after God's own heart, but his children were far from God's heart. And. It's not as if they did not know the word, they went to the temple regularly. The sacrifices were offered for the whole congregation on the day of atonement. But yet the children were far from God. Just as Job offered sacrifices for his children, we need to do that to preempt these kinds of things happening. In our lives as well. And I think that's a big take, Chloe. Thank you.
Yes, Sister, we do need to, we, alright, so yes, we do need to think about, um, our children. Our children, sorry, we do need to think about our family members, I'm put like that, when we, um. Daily, because we never know, we never know what the situation is. So it's important for parents to keep their children in prayer, even though, you know, you've done all you could and whatever, to make sure that they stay in line. You need to keep them in prayer because, I mean, at the end of the day, they make their own decisions. And you would trust that they do the right thing, but you have to pray them, pray to make sure that they do the right thing as well. Yeah, right, so.
I just wanna, I just wanna bring in a little something here. I know we need to pray for the children and we need to, you know. But Proverbs, chapter twenty, twenty-three, verse thirteen and fourteen also says. Do not withhold correction from a child, for if you beat him with a rod, he will not die. You should beat him with a rod and deliver his soul from hell. You understand? So we need to correct our children to when they do wrong. We need to correct them, because if we don't correct them, what is going to happen? What is going to take place with them later on in life? They're going to grow up in a certain way and when nobody would be able to correct them and they will be going down the broad road of destruction. So we need to correct our children, apart from praying for them, we need to correct them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I thought came to me while this discussion was going on. Um, just something to think about, is it that because of what David did? It was difficult for him to correct his son? Was, is that, I, I don't know if that was the problem, because of his past affair, well, let's say affair with Bathsheba. And now his son getting into this, it became difficult for him to tell the son, well, you know, you're wrong. Because I, there was a child at one of my school who. Her mother was having an affair and the child started. Having her little affairs too and the mother tried to speak to her and she told her, you can't tell me anything. Because if you tell me anything, I'm gonna tell daddy. You know, so sometimes they hold you children, they see what you do and they hold you to whatever you're doing. And now you as a parent cannot say anything to the child because of the example that you have set. So I'm wondering if that was part of the, the reason why David said nothing, just wondering. Completely possible.
Sister Mike, um, according to the account here. David knew nothing until the situation had taken place according to the reading, yeah. And Absalom had already left and went away, remember he had was to run away because of what he did. And, um, I mean, um, Ammon, and it's only when it came to him. He couldn't, had, and he, he, he couldn't advise because this situation had already. Occurred and as a matter of fact, when Ammon wasn't there for David to talk to, because Ammon had fled. When, um. Absalom telling, um, David, let the king's sons go and have a, have a time. David, David tried to stop that. So we had to understand from what the scripture is saying, David only get to know. And I understand why, what you're saying, because if I have a, if I have a soul. And I can't take care of it, I can't tell nobody how to take care of it. But David was just coming out of that, it was a difficult time for him. And when he get to hear that, that is why he was robbed, because probably, who knows, he said, must he say, look at. What's happening in my household, because that could have, that could have been a, one of his, that could have been one of his state of mind as well. But he could not have done anything according to scripture here, because he only get to hear that. When it had already taken place, Ammon was not around because he had already fled. For, from, that, um, um, from, for, from correction. So David could not have spoken to him at all. God bless.
I, um, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I'm looking now to see where Amnon left. Because as far as I read, maybe I would have overlooked it. They didn't say that Amnon left, they spoke about. The king being rose and Absalom speak unto his brother Amnon neither good nor bad. For Absalom hated Amnon because he had forced his sister Tima. And then they say it came to pass after two full years. That's when they start, they had the incident where they had the sheep sharing and all of that. But I I didn't see anywhere where they said, Amnon left. So if you have it, tell us what verse it is.
Sister Pamela, I want to agree with you, David, what you say, because I am looking at it here and I'm seeing nothing about that.
And in addition.
I want to agree with you.
And in addition to that, I, I am, and this is me again. I am not buying the idea that David could not have done anything. He chose not to do anything because, he, again, he probably could not correct. He couldn't, he couldn't, he couldn't. His, his moral compass, she, remember, we talked about his moral compass after. Um, last week, sorry, when he, even though he sinned, and when Nathan spoke to him, he was able to think, oh my goodness, I've sinned against God. His moral compass never went anywhere, and so that kicked in here as well, where he was able to, well, not say. To his son, well, you did wrong with it. Because if he had done that, somebody in the court, because everybody in the court would have known what he did. Somebody in court may have very well said, but eh, David, you didn't do so, 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 so. So how are you coming to say X, Y, Z about your child now? The other thing why I'm not buying it is because if you. Could send somebody to the very front of the battle line. To ensure that he was killed so that you could cover up a pregnancy. Then it means to see that you have more power than you actually believe that you do. And David could have do anything, you know. People would have talked yes, whether. But you could have done something. He chose not to do anything because his moral compass kicked in. And he was like, look, if I say anything now. It's gonna, it's gonna be an indictment on me because of how I lived my life. And and on top of that, David knew that this was a portion of the consequence that he had to face because of what he did. Right? So I don't, I don't know that I buy that he couldn't do anything. Because, you know, the the persons involved were absent. I think because of the power that David had and because of the empire that he ran. He could have found anybody at any time, given any punishment, made them do anything. And nobody would have said anything except under their breath, huh, do David do, da, 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 da. So I don't know that I agree, that he could not have done anything. I think he chose not to do anything. And Amnon stayed in the house, probably feeling himself because, well, I do my thing. And nobody are doing nothing because Isaac Prince and Absalom, brother Absalom, did what he had to do after two long years. Right? So I don't know that I agree with that, but again, if there's somewhere that says that Amnon left. I'm willing to read again. If not, well, now that situation was a whole mess. And it continued to be a mess. And David, for reasons best known to him, whether we want to speculate or not, reasons best known to him, he just didn't do anything. And that's how it was. He didn't, he didn't do, he did nothing for reasons best known to him. Right? And I don't, I don't think, I definitely don't think he, it was because he could not have, he chose not to. Anybody else? Alright, we have eight minutes to play with, I think. Um, and I really want to talk about. The part of, well, at least the part where Absalom was included. I really wanted to talk about um Absalom's after the, after the murder, murder of. Amnon, I really want to talk about what Absalom did after that. Because as I said, Absalom was quite the strategist. And when he, when he murdered, I'm gonna just get the, the chapter, I think it was, I think it's, it starts at seconds, it's fifteen now? Where he, where he left, where he left and came back. After he murdered Amnon. Remember, after he murdered Amnon. He ran away, he, yeah, he, right, so it's, it starts at the end of thirteen there and continues, well, through fourteen and it gets down to fifteen there. Right? Um. And after he kills Amnon. Absalom ran away. Which, you know, ob- obviously, you know, you, you, David, David seemed to love all of his children. And he, yeah, he really took on Amnon's.
Who, when Absalom fled, they then mourned for his son.
For Absalom, yeah. Oh, he mourned for Absalom? I thought he was talking about, okay, so when I read verse thirty-eight, thirty-nine. I thought he was talking about Amnon, I thought he was mourning for Amnon, no, no, no. Mourned for his son every day. I thought it was, no, I thought it was um, um, Amnon he was talking about. Okay, so um, yeah, so Absalom ran away. And David seemed to be very sad. Well, he not seemed to be, he was very sad. Because he really loved Absalom. I want to believe he loved Amnon too, even though he did, even though he did what he did, I want to believe that he loved. Um, Amnon very, very much. And he. And he left for three years. And after those three years, we read fourteen and fifteen. We see that Absalom made a comeback. And it was quite the comeback because he came back with a mission. When he did come back, um, David welcomed him with open arms because, you know, his son came back. And just wanna pause in the, in the telling of that account there. David really portrayed God in that moment. Um, even when, even though Absalom murdered, he received him as a son. Right? He never made Absalom feel any way, he didn't, you know, try to arrest him or anything like that. He welcomed him again. And even where Amnon was concerned, he didn't um. Even though we're saying that he didn't do anything, he allowed Amnon. And I guess, sort of like a, even though it was his conscience playing there, he allowed Amnon. And, you know, sometimes God sees us doing things. And he allows us. It's not that he, it's not that he happy about it to them. It's that he wants to give us a chance to. Learn and to come to him and to be better. So in this portion of it, I think more than, more than anything, David showed. What God is like. He doesn't like the things that we do. And as much as we love to get outraged for God when people do things. God allows, God sees and he doesn't like, but he allows things that we do sometimes, and he's ever patient with us. Um, and he allows us to grow. And that is really what the mercy of God is, since we're talking about, we're trying to circle it back to, to God and and how he fits into the picture. Um. So in that, in those moments, David really portrayed who God is. And the characteristic of God and the mercy of how God displays mercy there. Right? But back to Absalom, who came back into the picture after three years. So he, he waited two years. To finish off Amnon. Then he waited three years to go and, I guess, cool off. And hide. But in those three years, we realized that Absalom was plotting. And he came back, he didn't make no fuss, well, what thing, came back, David welcomed him, didn't think anything of it. And then his political campaign began. And it started where, literally, he would stand, there was a, I believe they call it the King's Gate. And it, that is essentially where all the traffic would go. Right? So people would go in and out, I guess, to get into the, to the main city or whatever, and to see the king or. Or whatever, to get goods or whatever, but that was a main entry point, right, to get to the king's palace. And Absalom placed himself there. And when people were coming in, you know, he would talk to them and listen to their concerns, and he would tell them. Um, but you know. Um, he would, whatever little issue they had, whether it was, you know, serious or some little tedious thing he would say. Boy, I hear you, no, and if, if it was me, if it was me, I'd have handled that, but them fellows, them fellows, and they're like. They overwhelmed by, like, they, they are serious, but they are serious, they overwhelmed, but if it was me, so, me, so, like, I would have deal with that way. Me, I would have helped you, right? If I was king, by you, that gets us sort of normal, normal. And he did that with multiple people over multiple years. And so essentially, he built up a rapport. With the people who were in and out of the city. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is what we call a coup. It was a very smart coup. He gathered his supporters and he did it in such a way where he was charming and he made himself seem and. A lot of dictators, I'm saying dictators here because those are the persons that usually do this kind of thing. Dictators are persons that usually use charm before they use force. So they make sure and they bring a lovely little message for you, to make sure that, you know, they get you, they get the masses on their side, more or less. So they swear you in with all these good promises or better life and so on. And then they use the crowd that they've gathered to overthrow the sitting government, which is what a coup is. But. That only happened because, and that only happens because. At, in the governmental system, there is a disconnect. So the people probably felt as if, well, David and they were so far away and so aloof from them. That they were more or less untouchable, they were godlike. And so the people probably felt a little disenchanted, but they just needed that push from Absalom. To kinda sway them to the other side. And so, again, Absalom bided his time, he waited, he didn't jump anybody, he make sure and he waited until he got his crew together. And then he got his personnel, his people, certain people. To go and shout at the gate, long live Absalom, I think that was, the word was said. Long live Absalom, essentially. I mean, I'll be using the, the exact words, but long live Absalom. And this was, I'm talking years after. He really, really, really was a patient guy. He was a strategist, he make sure he get his crowd in order. He built affection and then he was able to. To start his coup, more or less, his mini coup, more or less. And that caused David to, literally, David and his, and the people who were still with him at the time. To run for the hills because they will, the persons who were with Absalom were literally trying to run over David and his people, and David had to, had to run up and hide. Right? Um. Yes, so, and so that is what happened in that account in a nutshell. Um, I realize it's seven fifteen, seven sixteen now, so um, we're gonna have to stick a pin in it. But just one last point before. Before we kinda close up, um, well, at least one point from me before we close up. Um, I just wanna go back to the point about that disconnect, that disconnect between officials and the people. It is not dissimilar to the relationship that exists now between. What we people like, what we like to call the Baptist circle, the William and the church. And I'm saying the church, I don't mean the Baptist unit, the Baptist circle alone, the Baptist faith alone. When I say the church, I mean everybody that was under the umbrella of Jesus Christ. Because of the history of Christianity, because of who we have. Allowed, quote unquote, to stand as the picture, the face of Christianity. We have allowed them to be the face of Christianity, and that particular unit has made. The church to be these super saints that can do neural. And these super saints are make, often make people who really do need Jesus. Feel so low and worthless, and it really has been like just this widening distance. When really and truly the church is supposed to be a hospital for these people. And we have made ours, we have allowed them to make us seem so aloof and afar off. And sometimes we do it. With our attitudes as well. We make them feel so afar off. And now we have where the devil is able to come in, using these people. And essentially create a coup in the church because these people come in under the guise of. Under the guise of wanting, you know, to, to create. Ah, I'm gonna use this to my feeling, I might regret it, but I'm gonna use this, this, this progressive Christian movement. I don't know what progressive Christian is. I don't know what that is. Right? And a lot of times they, like, saw a lot of misinformation. And a lot of people don't want to hear what people who are of the faith have to say because of the image. That we've created for ourselves, or we have allowed to create, been allowed to generate for ourselves. Um, so they'd rather listen to these people who make more sense to them and seem to be more accepting, quote unquote, of certain things. And this is something that we have allowed to germinate, right? I'm saying, let us not allow the disconnect to continue because we saw what happened with David and Absalom. And very, very soon, if we do not take care of that issue, that is going to be us. Right? We are supposed to be a hospital for sinners, we're supposed to take care of these people. Whether or not we agree with what they do is not the, the main focus of it. Our thing is to spread the gospel and make sure they receive it, not to make sure that they accept it, make sure that they receive the transmission. Right? Um, so yeah, so I just want to close up with that. And um. Anybody else has anything to contribute really quickly before, because of this session? Um, I want to take the liberty to say that we will be continuing with this Absalom coup thing. Because it goes, it goes deep and it needs to be discussed. So anybody else?
I just want to refer to Leviticus chapter twenty, verse seventeen. And it reads, if a man shall take his sister, his father's daughter, his mother's daughter, and see her nakedness, et cetera. He has uncovered his sister's nakedness, he shall bear his iniquity, which literally means he is supposed to be killed. So Absalom was actually doing what the. What the law said. However, David was not killed. So. David did not bear his iniquity as a murderer directly by being murdered. But Absalom was actually doing what the law said, however, it was supposed to go to the judges. Before the king and not be taken as one person's act. So that actually means that Absalom wasn't entirely wrong in doing it. But I say entirely because he was partly wrong and. He was, he was partly wrong, but he was still right because he didn't mention it. No action was taken because he was supposed to bring it as people often brought their issues to Solomon. As people often brought their issues to the king for him to hear and do it and take care of it. So Absalom was actually doing what the law said. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Sister Ne, for that reminder. Yeah, I told you, and it would have applied to them too because they would have been under the law, the law at that time.
Yes, yes, they were.
Yeah, absolutely, right on that, yeah.
Sister, just, just one, just one quick thing, verse twenty. Verse twenty, they say it was brought to his attention. Read verse twenty. And Absalom, her brother said unto her, had Ammon thy brother been with thee? But. But hold now thy peace, my sister, he is thy brother. Regard not this thing. So Tama remained desolate in her brother's Absalom home. And I was saying that, um, the boy left, it was verse twenty-seven, when Absalom, um, I, I just went ahead of things and, and thought that he. Um, left there, we read verse twenty-seven where David, um, he pressed David for them to, to go. However, this is saying here that Absalom told, um, Tama. Keep quiet, don't let nobody know about this thing. Because he had his plan, verse twenty is telling me that there. So as Sister Ne said, um, it was reported and nothing was done. I, verse twenty still not saying that David knew. Tama was told, hold your peace. The only time they get to know is when the mark bossold. The only time they get to know is when the mark bossed big and then that's when David was fed. So we will, we will not go continue on this, um take verse twenty, read that. And um when we come back, we just brush over that and um we go into the next account that you're you're saying with um with Absalom.
Alright, and we will stick a pin in it here, we will be back next week. Oh, sorry, week after, week after next, and we will go back to discussing the coup of Absalom because that is a really. Um it's deep and it's a lot and we need to discuss. So, and I'm back over to Sister Marson who will close us up for this evening, thank you everybody for participating. As always, and we hope that you were able to learn even more this week.
Thank you very much, Sister Kushel, you know, sometimes when we get into this, um. We feel like we can just continue it, but. It's, it's always good to stop at a point where we can go and continue, um go back and reread and see if we can get a better understanding of certain things. I am thankful for everything that was said and on this platform this evening and as I said, we go, we are going to go back. And read again, um. What it was. What it was, oh, Sister Kushel, one of the things I was looking at, but um one of the things I I I thought of. I think it is in chapter twelve itself and um where after. After, no, be even before Amnon um. Raped his half-sister, she was telling him, don't do this, you know, don't do this. If you go to the king and ask for me, it's two verses, if you go to the king and you ask for me. It it she she was sort of saying, if you are seeking for me, he will give me, he will give me to you, so you don't have to come to do this to me. Where you're going to be, you're going to have me now as an embarrassment and you are going to look like a fool in Israel. You know, but we realized that he he didn't bother with her and that he still forced her. And you know what was, what 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 keeps, um what keeps me amazed and I I and I'm asking my self discretion, I. Can't figure out the answers yet. As soon as he he was finished, as a matter of fact, as soon as he got what he wanted, after loss had conceived. He was just, he put the girl out and took and called back the same people, the same men who were there. That he told to go, get the man out, get them out from here, he called them back and tell them, get her out, bolt the door behind her. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out. This is what you wanted, you created this whole stuff, you did this and then, I I mean, I. I can't forget, if anybody can tell me next week why he behaved like that afterwards, um please, I need to know. That was, that was really, 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 um really something, really something, I can't figure out. After you did such a deed that you know was wrong, you come now to um just. Put her out, that go from me and this and that and the other, so uh and too, it brings us to the fact of how. Women were treated and still are, and still are now. Um my sister Anne said, sometimes by family members and sometimes by other people. However, we give good thanks and praise that we can sit and study his word. God's word is ever old and ever new, because all that happened in the past. We realize that it is just a cycle, it just keeps going round and round. And we see these things still happening even today. So we would leave with the, one of the thoughts is that we are going to. Make sure as parents and even grandparents to teach our children. Um guard them against, I know when we were growing up, we had that, you know, show me your friends, your parents want to see who your friends are. Make sure they, you know, and give them good advice on the company that they must keep. And as we pray for them and as we teach them the moral, godly issues. Um they will be able to make, we hope and pray and trust that they will make good judgments. And not listen to friends who give them, who would give them a bad advice or wrong advice. So our job continues, we continue to um do what we can do to. Help the work of God to go on and to help ourselves and make people. Continue to have people be made into the image of Christ. So God bless us this evening, thanks everyone for their contribution this evening, Sister Nadine, Brother Mike, Sister Pamela. Uh Sister Walcott, Sister Anne, Sister Ford, thank you all for your contributions this evening and may God bless us all. And as we close now, Father, we just give you thanks and praise for being with us this evening. Thank you for your presence with us, Lord, as we studied your word. Lord, we pray that your word will truly come alive in our lives, that we will not repeat past mistakes. But Lord, we would learn from them, we would teach them diligently, as you said, diligently to our children. And Lord, we pray that even our children will teach them to their children and it will continue from generation to generation that we. Lord, even in a, even in a terrible world as this, we know that we can still have. Good people, raise good children uh for you. So Father God, we just give you thanks and praise, we thank you for those who are truly making this sacrifice and commitment. To delve into your word and to present it to us and we pray, Lord, that you will continue to allow all of us. To study your word and whatever little contribution we can make, Father God, we just give you thanks and praise. And we will not fail to give you all honor, all glory and all the blessings as you. As we dismiss this evening, as we leave this platform, may you bless all our homes and all our families. Take care of all our needs because you are our provider. May you just bless everything that concerns us this evening, we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name, amen. Amen, and we see, now may the saving grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the love of God, the fellowship of the Holy Spirit. Rest and abide with us all now and forevermore, amen, amen, I end here. Amen, thank you very much, everyone again.